Call to order this regular meeting of the Beverly City Council, and it's also a joint meeting with the Planning Board, Monday, June 7th, 2021. Ms. Kent, could you please call the roll?
Ames?
Here.
Copeland?
Feldman?
Here.
Flaherty?
Flowers?
Here.
Houseman?
Here.
Rand?
Here.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guancey?
Here. Counselor Feldman, could you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Kathleen. And I just want to thank Counselor Houseman for doing a wonderful job leading us in the pledge the past 15 months from the comfort of his own home. Okay, first, on the agenda, I am going to read, we're going to go to resolutions. It's order number 124, and I sent the council a letter that said, "Attached, please find for your consideration a resolution that was sent to me by the Teamsters Union with their concerns that they have with Amazon." And tonight, we have to address this is Beverly resident, Mr. Peter Berry. Peter, if you want to go to the microphone and let us know how this came before, I know that you contacted me, but give us a little history, please.
Good evening. First, I'd like to thank Mayor Cahill and Council President Guancey and the entire council for allowing me to speak tonight in support of this Amazon resolution. For those of you who don't know me, I'm a lifelong Beverly resident. Other than the years I spent in the Marine Corps, I've been here my whole life. I'm also an executive board member of Teamsters Local 25 in the city of Boston, but we represent members from the entire state. And the way this resolution came about was, you know, we just felt that this company's been able to operate on an unlevel playing field, so to speak, in comparison to the other companies that do the exact type, same type of work that they do, like UPS and DHL. This resolution has been adopted, this non-binding resolution has been adopted in similar fashion unanimously in the cities of Boston, Cambridge, Somerville, Medford, Malden, Revere, Chelsea, Lynn, Winthrop, Lawrence, and Peabody. So the reasoning, we put this together because of the pandemic. As all of you know, we've all become pretty reliant on the e-commerce industry, but not all these companies are, you know, treating their employees the same way. So the subject matter is Amazon, one of the wealthiest companies in the world, and they just continue to grow and increase their distribution network and increase profits, but at the cost of their workers. They fail to meet basic obligations to their neighbors as well as their employees. So just a little bit about their safety record. 2019, Amazon recorded over 14,000 serious injuries across its fulfillment centers in the country, requiring days off and, you know, job restrictions and all that. These injury rates have gone up substantially over the past four years due to the company's, as a record, the company's own record. Across the country, Amazon employees have staged protests calling on the company to raise its minimum wage from $15 to a more livable wage, considering the company's profits and the wealth of the CEO, Jeff Bezos. Amazon has a history of treating its workers poorly. During the pandemic, Amazon workers have complained of not being provided with adequate PPE to do their jobs safely. They also reported over 20,000 positive COVID cases within their facilities. So what happens if they come set up shop here in Beverly? This is a working-class city with strong work ethics and values, where small businesses have suffered due to COVID-19. I know several on the council are small business owners, so I'm sure you get the point where if another business came to set up shop next to you, they'd have an unfair advantage if they don't have to adhere by the same rules and regulations that you do, which is where this resolution comes into place. So what we're asking for is just them to meet basic community standards, like I referred to earlier, similar companies that do this type of work that we represent, UPS and DHL, but they work on a different playing field, like I said. They use independent contractors. They're not considered actual employees of the company, so they don't have to pay them any benefits or cover them by workman's compensation or any of the like, whereas companies like UPS, DHL, they do. They treat, you know, they're actual employees of the company. They have to fall under safe driving rules and work under better conditions, you know, have to beat background checks, you know, go in front of, you know, screening boards. They have to take, you know, drug analysis tests. So there's a lot more scrupulation with employees that work for these companies as compared to Amazon that don't require any of that because they're not employees of the company, even though they're putting their Amazon packages on your doorstep every single day. So in closing, I thank you for the opportunity to speak on this, and I just hope you would consider adopting this resolution on behalf of all those workers in the community that we live in. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Berry. Any councilors have any questions for Mr. Berry? Okay, I'll quickly, Peter, I'll read the resolution. Hold on. Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Ames, my bad. New with this.
So, um, thank you for coming before us and bringing this issue to light. I think it's important. I think wherever we can, we want to have people earn a living wage and have benefits here in Beverly to be able to live here and thrive here. And so do you think that this pressure that you're bringing to bear across the eastern part of the state is going to make an impact with Amazon regionally?
Well, that's our hopes. I mean, we only ask that they try to treat their workers that are, you know, some of them are residents of here in Beverly and these surrounding communities. They work in and out of our cities. They drive their trucks in and out of our city all the time, but by them not following basic guidelines and adhering to, you know, Department of Transportation rules because they're not actual employees, you know, it puts our communities at risk. So we feel it's just the right thing to do for these cities and towns to say, put them on notice and say, "Listen, alls we're asking is for you to do business the way these other companies that are doing the same exact type of work do business."
Well, thank you for bringing us before us, and, you know, we go back a long way. You're a solid Beverly citizen, married to a solid Beverly citizen.
I appreciate it.
With two sons who are solid Beverly citizens. So I think it's always good for us to hear these issues and see how we can support the people who work here in the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well said, Counselor Ames. Anybody else? Okay, so I'll read the resolution, then I'll ask for motion to approve. Resolution for fair and full employment opportunities at Amazon, whereas Amazon has targeted the city of Beverly for expansion of its e-commerce network, and whereas COVID-19 has had a devastating impact on the health, safety, and well-being of the residents of the city of Beverly, and whereas state and local guidelines to prevent the spread and curtail transmission of the coronavirus have had a devastating economic impact on local retail establishments in the city of Beverly and have changed the retail options for the residents of the city of Beverly, and whereas preventative measures put in place to combat COVID-19, and whereas existing retail and e-commerce delivery networks currently operate in the city of Beverly and set community standards for families sustaining wages, benefits, including but not limited to quality health insurance and secure retirement, and whereas these retail and e-commerce delivery options coexist in Beverly's diverse neighborhoods while adding value to the fabric of the community, including offering good careers for Beverly residents to provide for their families, and whereas existing e-commerce delivery options have aptly served the residents of the city of Beverly throughout the COVID-19 pandemic while maintaining the highest of standards for its essential workforce. Now therefore be it resolved, who's that? The Beverly City Council, of course. The Beverly City Council, hereby assembled, encourages Amazon to sit down with the Beverly community, included but not limited to representatives from the International Brotherhood of Teamsters Local Number 25, locally impacted neighborhood groups, local residents, and other interested parties to discuss how Amazon can expand delivery operations, warehouses, and fulfillment centers in a way that is beneficial to the city of Beverly and its residents, guaranteeing, 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 it's been a long time, sustainable growth for the city and helping to ensure that fair and equitable employment standards are maintained for all e-commerce delivery networks throughout the city of Beverly, and it be further resolved that prior to any expansion into the city of Beverly that Amazon's operation meets or exceeds current community standards set by existing e-commerce delivery networks. This would include all delivery drivers to be direct employees of Amazon and not independent contractors. Amazon will ensure that all employed delivery drivers pass the most rigorous background checks, including Cory checks, and are compliant with all federal DOT drug testing guidelines. Amazon will only hire competent and safe delivery drivers that will maintain the utmost professional conduct in their day-to-day operation in the neighborhoods of the city of Beverly. Thank you, Mr. Berry.
Thank you.
I would entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Second?
And a roll call, Ms. Kent.
No roll call.
Oh, no, no roll call.
No.
All set.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, the resolution passes seven to zero. And before Mr. Berry steps down, I have a little bit of trivia. Mr. Berry's brother-in-law was the greatest city council president of all time, Mr. Bruce Nardella, back in the mid-'90s.
Don't tell anybody, but I had you pay to say that, right?
No, you know what? Always trying to get on his good side. No, he was very instrumental, along with Mayor Scanlon, in really turning the city's finances around back then.
Thank you all very much. I appreciate your support.
Thank you, Peter. Best to the family. 7:15. We're going to do it right now. No, we're doing the public hearing first. Okay, let's move down to our 7:15 public hearing on order number 115. Ms. Kent, could you please read that order?
Hello. Order number 115, the city of Beverly ordered that the city council, the city of Beverly, hold a public hearing on Monday, June 7th, 2021, at 7:15 p.m. at 191 Cabot Street, 3rd Floor, Council Chambers, Beverly, Mass., relative to the interdepartmental mental transfer of 537,500 for various FY 2021 costs. And this was in the paper on May 21st.
Thank you, Ms. Kent. And our finance director, Mr. Brian Ailes, is here to talk about this. Mr. Ailes?
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselors, it's good to be here in person in front of you this evening for a change. You have before you this evening a request to transfer funds between departments, which requires approval of the city council. So this is not an increase to any appropriation, it's merely a shifting of already appropriated funds. The areas that we are seeking to transfer the monies from are the Reserve for Unforeseen, a transfer of $514,409. You will recall in late fall of 2020, there was a supplemental appropriation that the council approved. Part of that appropriation placed roughly $480,000 into the Reserve for Unforeseen in addition to what remained within that category. The thinking at that time was that it was a contingency against any COVID-related CARES disallowances, if you will. We also were concerned that the CARES funding stream at that point was going to dry up at the end of December of 2020. It had since been, since that time, been extended to the end of this calendar year, which allowed us to continue to utilize those funds and not need this reserve or contingency that we set aside collectively. In addition, we also thought if the winter was a worse winter than usual, we would possibly need to tap these funds to facilitate snow removal, plowing, road treatment, et cetera. We were fortunate in that the, from that point forward, the winter wasn't as severe as possible, and therefore the funds were available to be transferred. In addition to that, we are also requesting a transfer out from our workers' comp medical bill line of $23,091. These funds will then be moved into three areas, the animal control overtime line for 2,500 additional dollars to be spent before June 30th, the litigation line within the solicitors department for an additional $35,000, and a half a million dollars into the road and sidewalk capital fund, which will help facilitate some additional roads being paved within that fund. So I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Ailes. Any questions for members of the city council? Counselor Rand?
Thank you. Can you remind me just the $500,000 that's being transferred into roads and sidewalks? Will you remind me what the proposal is for that funding? Like, as in which roads and sidewalks, or is that not determined?
Yeah, so it doesn't, the way it works is there's a capital fund, which is basically a bucket of funds that engineering then uses to go out and do a number of projects throughout the city. What we do know is slated for kind of the next couple of roads to be addressed are, I believe it is, Mayor, do you, Hancock, Jackson, come on, you probably know the others.
Thanks, Mr. Ailes. Mr. President, Counselor, thanks for the question. Yeah, you can see Hancock and Jackson have some waterwork going on right now in anticipation of paving them this year. We had been looking to pave Colin this year from Rimble to Heather, but when we approached National Grid, because we always give them the heads-up, they said, "Oh, we need to do gas main work there." So we're looking to repurpose. And, you know, as you folks know, we had some conversations with you earlier this year to solicit, you know, some of your thoughts on what's needed, and we periodically are meeting with Commissioner Collins, Mr. Barber, the city engineer, Mr. Ailes, and we have another meeting scheduled of that group early next week. So, you know, figuring that you folks are going to want to remind us of some areas in the meantime, so please do. I mean, that's, that's the process, as you know. So I hope that answers.
Thank you.
That help?
Yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor Cahill. Anybody else? Let's go this side, and then we'll go, I'm going to alternate. So let's go to Counselor Houseman, please.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Ailes. So just so I understand, the administration is planning on allocating some of this to complete the work on Jackson and Hancock. Is that correct?
It's correct.
Very happy to hear that. I know myself and some of my other fellow councilors have, have been sort of ringing the bell on, on those streets because they've been mostly half-done for, for many, many years, and I know the residents will appreciate that. Just to confirm, the rest of Odell will be completed this year as well?
The work, the work is, it's already underway. The work has started, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Ames?
A big woo-hoo for Jackson and Hancock, even from outside the ward. They certainly deserve the love. So I just, so you're not exactly sure from where you're going to go from that point? And I'm sure we as councilors would love more insight moving forward on that. I was just curious if there was, if roads and sidewalks were the only use for this capital fund?
Yes.
That's my first question. I got one other.
Well, intersection redesign, sometimes there's some design work related to some larger projects that we might utilize these funds for as well.
Okay. Oh, gosh. I lose it. I think the second one has disappeared into the ether. I'm nervous here, too. So I think.
Want to come back?
Yeah, you can come back.
Of course. Let's go all the way down to Counselor Feldman.
All right, thank you. You had mentioned, was it 23,000 that was coming out of the, being transferred out of the workers' comp line?
Yes.
And is that because it was not going to be used in this fiscal year? So, and that's bringing that budget, that down to zero then?
That's correct. In fact, we've had the lowest expenditure level in 10 years through that line this fiscal year. We typically budget $300,000 into that line item.
Okay.
And we've spent as high as 400 and some change in 2016, and this year is the lowest. We've only spent 110,000 of it.
Okay.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Flowers?
Thank you. Actually, Counselor Feldman just asked the question that I was going to ask, so I'll just only say that I'm very excited about Jackson and Hancock Street, as the mayor probably anticipated I would be, so thank you for that.
And I'm sure former Mayor Thomas Kreen is very excited about having his street paved this year. Counselor Ames, you ready to go?
So, yes. So my last question, which is probably fairly obvious, but these dollars have not yet been spent.
No, they have not.
Okay, and you'll, and how long do you think before they will be expended?
So the way the fund works is it's a rolling fund, so there are still balances available from the Chapter 90 allotment this year that we scheduled during the construction season, which we're basically in right now. The goal with all of this, when we talk about roads and sidewalks, is we want to put as much resource into this category as we can. We know there's a need out there. So the hope is with this additional 500,000, that'll bring the annual city allotment to 1.9 for this fiscal year, in addition to the million we received from Chapter 90 this year. Come July 1, the request that's before you right now is another 2 million in city funds through the annual budget process and an additional 1 million from the state through Chapter 90. So the goal is really to provide enough resources to really start making some headway on some, on some real needs among our neighborhoods.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Cahill has gotten up.
Just a little more context, too. I think most of you know, we, we contract with a couple of different sidewalk contractors and a couple of paving, and there's a dance with them because they do work in multiple communities, and so we, we try to tee up work and get them into town and keep them here. And so there's, there's a lot of work that engineering and Commissioner Collins have to do to try to make sure that that's effective. Well, once we get them in town, we want to just keep kind of pushing the work at them. So, and, and you know, we all know that there are many more streets to do than can be done in any given year, so, you know, that, that's why we're going to be sitting again. We sat earlier to make sure that the kickoff to spring, there was enough, you know, work teed up and agreed on that they could move forward, and now it's kind of checking back at it. And, you know, and again, there's, it's, part of the readiness of certain streets has to do with, you know, whether, whether grid has done their work, whether we've got some water indoor sewer work that needs doing under the street, too. So that, that's what factors into what we all look at as the various conditions or comparative conditions of a given paving surface as well. Thanks.
Counselor Rotundo?
Mayor, before you leave the podium, try to grab you before that. I know you ask us to put in requests for sidewalks and streets, what have you. What is the method that you guys use with the commission? I know you guys meet as a group. I know there's certain things, there's programs out there, but ultimately, what is the real method that you use when the pot of money comes into the engineered department?
Yeah, you know, it, it's, it's to continually upgrade our road rating index. I always get the pavement surface index, PSA, pavement surface index, which we try to do every two years, and we just kind of, we looked at some of that money now and said it's time to do it again. So we're going to be getting updated information there. And it's also, you know, sometimes a street that may be in better condition than another jumps the list because the infrastructure under, under the street is in such tough condition, you know? So those, and, you know, and trying to focus on, trying to focus on meeting the need around the city and balancing some, some neighborhood work with main streets work, right? I mean, there are so many more heavily traveled roads that maybe don't hold up as, as well just because of the travel they get, year in and year out. So it's trying, trying to do something to balance the main streets and the side streets as well. It's, it's not, it's not entirely, well, I mean, we try for it to be scientific in that we're, we're going off of these comparative grades that the roads get based on their, you know, the, the formulas, looking at their integrity of the surface, but then it's also taking into account some of that other, some of those other considerations about other infrastructure under the road and readiness to do work based on both that and the utilities. You know, as you, as you all know, we don't want utilities coming and cut up a road right after we finished it. Commissioner Collins and the engineering team do an incredible job of an ongoing conversation with National Grid as the main utility under the street other than our own to try to manage that. Is that helpful?
Excellent. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else? Do any members of the public wish to make a comment on this public hearing? If not, then I will, I will ask if anybody watching via Google Meet has a question to type in, in the chat.
Your name.
Your name and address and your question, and we can have, get an answer for you. Okay, let's go to City Council Budget Analyst Jerry Perry. Mr. Perry?
Mr. President, members of the council, good evening. It's a pleasure to be here, finally. So very happy to see everybody as opposed to looking at you on a computer. I'll be happy, Mayor, when we can take these masks off. I kind of hope we can encourage you in that area. Having said that, I do want to comment briefly about the budget request. Just, I sent you a memo the end of last week about this, pretty straightforward stuff. The Reserve for Unforeseen, the $514,000 will completely deplete that fund. Strategically, we were aware, and I certainly was, I know we talked about it during the course of the year, consistent with the finance director's position, this was intended for this if we got through the COVID matters, which we did, so there's certainly no surprise in the utilization of that funds. With regard to the workers' comp, the finance director is correct, there's quite a bit of funds left there. There is actually, based on my review, approximately $190,000 left in the account as we speak, so there's certainly sufficient funds, and you're going to see some turnbacks on that at the end of the year, I believe anyways. It's been a good year for workers' comp, will help us with the undisagging of fund balance and free cash, so expect that to happen. Just two, a couple, few more comments on litigation. You may not recall, there was a bit of a cut for the current fiscal year when we did the budget last year with Ms. Williams', accounts about eight or nine percent, as I recall. I am a little concerned even with this year's budget, there may not be enough, and we have to be prepared for that, a couple of reasons. There's quite a bit of litigation coming forward, I think some of you were, a lot of it, but there's also, the collective bargaining agreements are all up this year, so there's going to be quite a bit of work in that area. So I just want to forewarn you, in the event we should spend a little bit more than was budgeted this year, we have to be prepared to maybe transfer at the end of next year, so just, just to bring that to your attention. With regards to the roads and sidewalk, I've been asked a few things this year at the behest of Counselor Ames, so you've probably got an email from me today. I apologize, there's a lot of stuff there, as the council president reminded me with exclamation points of 67 spreadsheets. My apologies to that, but there's quite a bit of information, there's historical data there for you to go back and look at it at your leisure. As you know, Commissioner Collins will be here tomorrow night, so at least you have some information as to what's been going on in the past, and I know the mayor's working hard with Mr. Commissioner Collins to try to get back in the track of showing you what they're looking for in the future, and they've already articulated some of the roads that they're going to be doing that as well. So that, that's pretty much what we're doing. I know it's, from a policy perspective, it's important to all of you with regard to that, it's something we certainly work on. One other thing I just want to add, and again, because of Counselor Ames's comments, how this works mechanically is we appropriate money into an account that's under the executive branch, and then those funds are transferred into, as Bryant said, a capital project fund. Capital project fund is, he indicates, a rolling fund. If we were to keep it into the executive branch, it would close out on June 30th, we reverted it back to free cash, we couldn't spend it. So they rightfully, and I completely agree with what they do, they put it in this project so we could roll it out. I mean, it's timing, procurement issues, a whole bunch of factors that require to carry over on a fiscal year, so it's a smart decision from the administration to be doing that, and that's the mechanics on an annualized basis of how we handle the funds associated with that. So bottom line, you know, I'm comfortable with this. Certainly it's your prerogative whether you want to make these transfers, but as your budget analyst, I would recommend adoption of the administration's request. Mr. President, I'm more than happy to answer any questions anybody you may have.
Mr. Perry, any questions for Mr. Perry? Counselor Houseman?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Perry. Good to see you in person, although I think the mask is probably an improvement, but.
I am wearing a tie tonight.
I was referring to myself. The, I want to ask you a little bit about this, this rolling fund. This is a fund that the administration, as you described it, is, is this something that, I gather, other municipalities must do as well, and that the city of Beverly has been doing for a long time also?
Absolutely, yeah. Capital project funds are normal accounting methodologies used in all cities and towns of the Commonwealth and even throughout the country. It's for these purposes to make sure they go for the capital. It's for these purposes to make sure they go for the capital projects. To refresh your memory, we strategically used the capital project fund and how we put funding aside for the new police station. We went over two separate years on free cash, and we dumped it into a capital project fund, as well as actually, three years. We did one year, one, and then two, and two. And we were able to take the money, dump it in there, because if we didn't do that, we would lose it on June 30 to free cash. And the money stays like in a savings account, if you will, and could be used when they're ready to expend the funds. So very common practice, yeah. It's very, we do it quite a bit here, and it's done quite a bit elsewhere.
Thank you for refreshing my memory. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilor Houseman. Councilor Ames?
First, thank you, Mr. Perry, for all the information you gathered for me and to the administration for bringing it forward. It really was, it's insightful to see how the street and sidewalk budgets are built and where the money actually goes. It's incredibly helpful. The, only, the last question I have is like, do you know what the balance currently is in this capital?
Do you know?
In this line?
I, I do not know the answer to that. I don't know. We can get that for you, but I don't, offhand, I don't know.
Just, just.
Yeah, we, I can give you a back of the envelope right now, but we.
Yeah, that's perfect.
I do know if the 2 million is approved in next year's budget, this, this transfer is approved, and the Chapter 90 comes in at the million for next year, that there will be roughly 3.3, I believe, somewhere around there.
So in other words, it rolls pretty quickly. It doesn't build.
We definitely chew through it. I mean, these are expensive projects.
That's good. Thank you.
Asphalt is very expensive.
Thank you, Councilor Ames. Anybody else? Okay. Hearing no further questions or comments, I will close this public hearing and then entertain a motion to approve the transfer request. So moved. Second. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven to zero.
Yes.
Okay. We have a joint public hearing scheduled at 8 o'clock tonight. I'd like to take care of two, hopefully, quick things. Can we call something out of committee? Ms. Kent?
Your Honorable City Council, I hereby appoint subject to your review and recommendation Mr. Richard Scanlon, 107 Salem Road, Bill Ricker to the Board of Assessors. Mr. Scanlon will fulfill the seat left vacant by Mr. Robert Marshall, who recently passed away. Mr. Scanlon is a highly regarded assessor and extremely knowledgeable in the field and will compliment the work being done by the board. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
Mr. Scanlon, you're here, so come on up and introduce yourself.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, members of the council, for allowing me to appear. My name is Richard Scanlon. I am the former Chief Assessor and Chairman of the Board of Assessors in Bill Ricker. I retired April 23rd at 60 years old, I'm happy to say. So I can tell you a little bit about myself. I was born in Springfield. I grew up in Wilmington. I went to Wilmington High School, graduated from there, did my undergrad work at Assumption College in Worcester. I got into the business working for the city of Woburn a couple of years out of college. I graduated in 1983. I worked my way through a junior appraiser, data collector, up to a senior appraiser. I left in 1993 to take the chief assessor's job in Bill Ricker and stayed almost 30 years, 28 years, actually, so. Let's see. Personally, I live in Bill Ricker. I have two boys, ages 31 and 24, and two grandchildren, ages three and one. So I do have public service in the blood. My dad was a longtime teacher and coach at Wilmington High. They named the baseball field after him when he passed away years ago. My mom was a former town clerk in Wilmington for years, who retired about 15 years. And my brother Steve is the current high school varsity soccer and hockey coach in Wilmington. So that's a little bit about myself.
Thank you, Mr. Scanlon. Any questions? That's pretty good. I have one for you.
Sure.
Hockey player, baseball player, professional from Bill Ricker. Give me two, one of each.
I'll give you two. I'll give you many.
I know, but I got two in the back of my head.
One is certainly Tom Glavine. I went through his induction to the Hall of Fame in 2014. And Gary DeSantis, actually, his dad and my dad taught together in Wilmington High for years.
Awesome. How about the hockey player?
Hockey, Tom got, got actually drafted by the Kings.
Right, he did.
Mike Strulo played hockey in Bill Ricker, Paul Ames. But the most famous is probably Bobby Miller.
Well, what about Tom Fitzgerald? 17 years of the.
There's so many Fitz, yeah, but they went to Austin Prep, so they don't.
I know they did. He went with me. That's why I say that.
There you go. There you go.
Good stuff. Bill Ricker's a nice place to grow up. Great athletes.
Yeah, sure. Definitely.
Okay. Now, what do I do now?
That's your motion.
I would entertain a mo, really, it's been 15 months. I would entertain a motion to approve the appointment.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you very much. I look forward to working here. Thank you.
You can very highly recommend it from Terry DeBlaise, our assessor. Yeah. Good crew. Thank you.
Mr. President, if I could say I've worked with Rich for a number of years, he's popular.
Great. Good stuff. Lot of fans.
Yep, I heard the same.
Okay. We have one more thing. I am going to go to order number 122. Superintendent Dr. Susan Chirocek, lease purchase transactions with Apple student laptops for the one-to-one laptop initiative at Beverly High School. Dr. Chirocek and Jean Sherbonne are here. Please.
Hi. Thank you very much for having us here. We're looking for permission to enter into a four-year lease for the laptop program. What you have attached to you is a quote for 300, quantity of 300. We're still working out the specifics on how many we need, but what we need from you is permission to enter into a four-year lease.
Right. And you've, you've, well, you've done that in the past.
Excuse me?
I mean, we've done this in the past.
Yes, you have.
Ever since you, you.
Yes, we've, this is the 11th year that we're in the program. Two years, we went into a three-year lease because we missed the deadline of becoming, coming before the city councils. And we still have the same program that's been working for the last 11 years, that we do offer a scholarship program for the students. So the highest amount off could be 60% off, down to 40%, and then 20%. And we do get, do receive funding from the Beverly Ed Foundation to offset the 20% off. And the funds for the offsets do have to come through the school appropriated budget, and it's budgeted. And the cost for this would be hitting the FY '22 budget.
Thank you, Ms. Sherbonne. Dr. Chirocek, anything to add? Not required. It's hot. Okay. Any questions for Ms. Sherbonne? Councilor Ren?
Thank you. First, I want to just take the chance to commend you for even having this program. I know in the past year that we saw other school districts that were not as prepared as Beverly is with one-to-one initiatives. And I, we all saw what a difference that made. So thank you. I'm wondering if you could share maybe just some kind of background numbers and details about the lease? Like, how many, how many computers does that lease cover? Is that, does the lease cover just the cost of the programs and maintenance? And I'm sorry if it was in the actual lease, I didn't.
Yes. So what it is, is the cost is, is we have 300 computers. The, the cost of each computer is approximately 779. And why we say approximately is they do come out with a, a new model at this time. So, but it's too late for us to get city council approval, so it may reduce a little bit. There is a four-year Apple Care service on it for 229. So the whole total is 302,400 for the 300 units. We have been able to reduce the cost from the parents over the years, from 11 years ago when it started. And we're thinking, we're targeting that it's going to be about 276, but I'm not specifically sure on that. And the reason why is that the Apple Care has upgraded it, so it does cover insurance for if there's two losses in a year based on liquid physical damage, which is something that was not covered before. The other thing that is really exciting this year is that Apple, if we do go into the four-year lease, is not going to be charging us any interest. So in the past, we've had to pass that on to the families that are leasing it from us. And for the counselors that are not familiar with it, the students do end up with the, it's a dollar buyout at the end, and they do have to pay sales tax on the product at the end, because obviously, we're sales tax-free, but when a family buys it, it's not. I don't have the numbers of like the scholarships and stuff, but what we do is, on the scholarships, we do offer scholarships, and that can be reassessed at any time. So if a family today is fully working and all of a sudden somebody gets laid off, they can come in with their documentation. They do have to prove their income with us, with their W2s, most recent pay stubs. And likewise, we expect that if people all of a sudden then do receive or get a job, that they come back to us for us to reassess, that it may move them from a 60% off to a 40% off.
Got it.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Two more quick, if I may. So then I wanted to ask, too, if there's been some looking into other programs? And I'm, I'm channeling my late neighbor here, Jim Ladder, used to ask this question every year, so the previous Ward 3 counselor. He just would always ask, have you looked into other, other lease options? So why Apple, basically? Or have you reviewed that recently?
So the reason why we stick with Apple is that we are on a Mac platform, for the answer to that. And I don't think that as far as the educational part, that the instructional part, that they're looking to change any kind of app on that. We do know that.
From the teachers, kind of from the teachers' perspective? Is that what you mean, or?
Well, actually, it was before Jean Sherbonne's time, so that we've been actually, when they chose that platform.
Okay.
So, I mean, pretty much, we look at everything at all times. I mean, we look at programs, et cetera, like that. So it's more of that that we look at as, you know, to be able to get the instructional out to the children and the students. We do go to Apple. I mean, they're offering this year the, you know, no interest, which is, you know, fabulous. And we've been able to sustain the level of the, of the laptops. So a lot of times when you get into, you know, like looking at copying machines, you know, sometimes you have to buy an inferior one to come out with the same price or a slower machine, which that's one area that with the laptops, we've been able to keep up with what's out there for the students.
They are good machines. And then my last question just is, do you distribute all 300 every year? Or do you have some that kind of?
Yeah, so what it is, is that we get, we estimate, right now, we're estimating when we get the quotes from them, 300, that's how much we usually have to get each year. So with this lease would be for the freshmen all the way to their senior year. Last year's will expire, so we're always rolling.
Okay.
The three. And the numbers do come in the same pretty much every year. Our enrollment has been increasing, so, and we do usually purchase a few extra for those people that do show up in September.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Ren. Councilor Houseman?
Yeah, I'll just be brief. Yeah, no, I think this, I would echo Councilor Ren's comments about Beverly being ahead of the curve on, on having a one-to-one program. I mean, computers are pencil and paper of, of, of an earlier generation, I'll say. The, the 300 that, that are listed here, those are separate from, independent from the numbers that are provided by Beverly Education Foundation? Or, or does the funding from that group basically subsidize the digital divide within this set of 300?
Right. So the Beverly Ed Foundation's amount would be subsidizing for the, so the students that, you know, so some people, some students pay 100%, they get, they pay 60%. And then when it gets down to the 40, so what Beved is, they, they're the one that is fun, helping us fund it the whole, because obviously, we have to pay Apple the full price. So their funding comes in along with some of our own appropriated funds.
And I just want to disclose, I'm a former board member of Beved Ed and a current non-voting, you know, advisor. And I don't think that will, sort of disclosing for the record, I don't think that'll, I'm able to take a vote on this without it affecting my, having a bias for the vote that I can make an objective decision. I, I fully support this program. I think it speaks for itself in terms of the benefits to the school district and our pupils. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Houseman. Councilor Feldman?
Thank you. I just had one quick question. So this is a renewal of a four-year lease purchase that was similar to the one four year? We've had one going for the last four years, basically? Is that?
Yeah. So, so last year, we, we, because of the pandemic, we were not able to get into a four-year because we weren't meeting as city council. So what we did is we took our, our hope that we had enough funds in our revolving account to pay the, to pay Apple in three years, but the students pay us in four.
Got it. Okay. And then this is part of, this line item will be built into the, we haven't seen the, I don't have the budget book in front of me, but this is a line item in the school budget that.
Yep. So, and, yep. So this is budgeting and our appropriated under, under lease purchases, under our technology.
Got it.
And that's only the differential, you know? So the, the parents are paying 60%. We're paying the opposite.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Feldman. Quick. Councilor Ames?
I just wanted to, I'm in the same boat as Councilor Houseman, as I'm a former board member for Beved. Also, it's your Mac that got me through the pandemic on the city council meetings. It's still running strong, and this program made such a difference in his education.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Councilor Ames. Thank you both for being here. Nice to see you in person.
Thank you. Good to see you.
And we'll see you tomorrow, too?
Yes.
I would entertain a motion to approve the request.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries eight to zero.
Really emotional.
Yes.
Probably so. Give me a second. I'm worried.
Lisa, are you able to? I want to know where the councilors from.
After the public hearing, it comes down.
Right, it's only fair.
Tell me.
All right.
Equal time on the band.
That's right.
Doggy dog world up there.
There's ice up there.
It's really cold.
Stacy, you can break that.
Yeah, okay.
I like those shorts.
Paul, one of your shorts. Dance?
Oh, my goodness, you're here? We canceled them walking up right now.
I keep saying no.
Hello, Wayneo. My wife picked it up for me.
What's that?
Yeah, listen, I took it, I took it off the corpse of a body in the way here. I took it off the corpse of a body.
I don't know.
Well, we don't know who they are, so, and those people, but there was people trying to get earlier, that Robert was headed out.
Can we read that one? Yeah, correct. Okay. It is a little after 8:00. We have a joint public hearing with the planning board. Ms. Kent, could you please read order number 110?
Order number 110, legal notice for the City of Beverly. Notice is hereby given in accordance with MGL Chapter 40A, Section 5, that the Beverly City Council and Beverly Planning Board will hold a joint public hearing on Monday, June 7, 2021, at 8:00 p.m. in the City Council Chambers, City Hall, 3rd floor, 191 Cabot Street in Beverly. Relative to a proposed amendment to the zoning map, rezoning map 52 Lot 75, currently zoned CG and R-10 to IR, and rezoning a portion of map 52 Lot 14, located within the City of Beverly, which is 19,024 plus square feet, currently zoned RSD to IR, referred to in zoning ordinance, Chapter 300, Article 8, 7. Copies of the proposed amendment are on file in the Planning Department and the City Clerk's Office, and are available for public viewing. And this was in the newspaper on May 21st and May 31st.
Thank you, Ms. Kent. And I will ask Chairman Hutchinson to come up and join me, or are you going to run it from there?
I can do it from here. I'm fine here.
Okay. Yeah, that's fine.
I don't have a mic.
Oh, okay. No, that's okay. Over the other?
She can sit over here.
All right.
Any Copeland? Yes, Copeland. Or do you want, do you want me to move and she can sit here?
You give that to Emily.
Emily sits next to me, though. Are we shifting now?
Yeah.
I don't know what I'm supposed to do.
I don't know what she has in the, I know it's broken.
It's okay, you can sit by my, I don't-
Come on, Ellen, we may not have many more, many of these left, you and I, so.
You know how to manage it.
Nice to see you.
Nice to see you, too.
And, um-
Special meeting of the Beverly Planning Board is called to order. We have one member who is participating remotely, so I need to call the, call the roll for everyone to confirm their attendance. And all of our votes tonight, if there's any, will be done by roll call. Members, when I read your name, just confirm. Okay, Vice Chairman Alexander Kraft?
President.
Thank you. Sarah Bartley, remotely?
Yes.
Was that a yes from Sarah?
I heard that.
Thank you. Derek Beckwith?
President.
Thank you. Ellen Flannery?
President.
Wayne Miller?
President.
Thank you. Rodney Sinclair? Rodney's not with us this evening, or running late. Brendan Sweeney?
President.
Thank you. Andrea Toulouse?
President.
And I am Ellen Hutchinson. Thank you. I'd welcome a vote, please, I'm sorry, a motion, please, to recess for the public hearing.
So moved back here?
Can I have a seconded by Mr. Beckwith, calling the roll. Alexander Kraft?
Yes.
Sarah Bartley?
Yes.
Thank you. Derek Beckwith?
Yes.
Ellen Flannery?
Yes.
Wayne Miller?
Yes.
Brendan Sweeney?
Yes.
Andrea Toulouse?
Yes.
Ellen Hutchinson, yes. Motion passes. We are now, Planning Board is now in public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hutchinson. And let's go right to our planning, our Director of Planning, Ms. Darlene Nguyen.
Correct.
Ms. Nguyen?
Thank you. This is my first in-person meeting as Planning Director. So as the letter from the mayor stated, we are proposing, the city has agreed to submit a zoning change, a map change, to an area of land that is currently zoned IR. The primary change is I, is, I'm sorry, CG to IR. But as you can see from that map, and I'll show a larger size of that map, the actual area that's owned by, in common by the same person there is three different zones. There's a little bit of R10 on the parcel, and then there's an adjacent RSD sliver. So we're looking to simplify it by changing that entire section to IR. The administration, the city, and the previous Planning Director had been working with the landowner there, who is Self-Signaling Technology, to identify an area in Beverly where they could relocate and build a more campus-like structure. They have a need to expand their business, including more employees and more land, more area of development for expansion of their business. They really wanted to do that in Beverly, and we really wanted to work with them. We were not able to find a parcel that really met the needs of the company. And so the next solution we looked at and entertained with them was a zoning change, as discussed for this parcel. The reasons that we believe this zoning map change is beneficial to the city is because it will generate additional tax revenue, and keep a really excellent corporate citizen in the city, as well as help them grow their life science business. We also realize that this is beneficial to the current property owner, to help them achieve their goals of expanding their business. The property owner, in addition, it's beneficial to the abutters in the neighborhood, because they have agreed to make additional commitments beyond what the zoning change would afford them, and they've agreed to provide this mitigation to abutters. I'm going to let them describe that in more detail. So if this zoning change is approved, they would consent to a development agreement. That would restrict those additional parameters and carry with the landowner. So they would carry, even if this property owner were to be, to move out, they would still be in place. Sorry, with the land, not the owner. So, on face, the proposed zoning change alone is simple and we believe favorable, when considering the abutters perspective, because it is currently, under the CG zoning, the side and rear setbacks are only 15 feet. The building height is 35 feet, and that's the one area where it is more favorable to be zoned IR. And currently, under the CG zoning, there's no site plan review required. So they could propose their, they could propose their expansion, 15 feet from the neighboring residential area, single-family residential area, and it doesn't require city review, the way our zoning is currently written. So they are willingly opting to request a change to the IR zoning. It will give them additional height under the existing ordinance, and, but it will also require that their setbacks have to be greater, just as is, on face. And it will opt them into the site plan review process, which requires Planning Board review, a public hearing, a butter notice, and many other things, such as stormwater management records and traffic analysis. So that in itself, I think is important to the city and beneficial. In addition, as I mentioned, the developer, or the property owner, has agreed to additional restrictions. They're willing to limit the setback to 50 feet, rather than the 15 or the 20 on the side setback, and 60 feet on the rear, rather than the 15 or 25. They're also willing to limit the height to 50 feet, rather than the 60 feet that they would be allowed under the IR. And they will continue the, to go for site plan review, review by the Planning Board and other boards and commissions in the city that review site plan review. And I think these, we agree that these commitments will provide the abutters with greater protection than they would normally get under the IR zoning district, or the CR, rate much greater than in the CG zoning district, and protect them against future uncertainty. The agreement, as I said, will run with the property, and we think will be mutually beneficial to both the city, the abutters, and as well as keep, what we believe is to be an excellent corporate citizen in the City of Beverly. Oh, and I did add this. So that's, that's the map a little bit bigger, still hard to see, but. And with that, I was going to ask Peter Gordo, from, who's representing Self-Signaling Technology, to go into a little bit more detail.
Thank you, Ms. Nguyen. Yep. Stop sharing this.
Good evening, Mr. President, and members of the council, and members of the Planning Board. My name is Peter Gordo, and I'm a Development Advisor, working with Self-Signaling Technology. This evening, I am accompanied by Matt Curran, CFO of Self-Signaling, Peter Muto, Director of Facilities, Chris Combe, Director at Self-Signaling, and Mark Glovsky, our attorney. And am I allowed to take off my mask, or?
Sure.
I have a hard enough time talking without it, so. This evening, first of all, Darlene gave most of my presentation, and she did a better job than I probably will, so I will try and make this as brief as I can. What I would like to do this evening is share a little bit of information about Self-Signaling and their need to expand, why we think that the current CG zoning, primarily CG zoning, probably would not result in the best outcome, both for Self-Signaling and for the neighbors, and why IR would result in a better outcome. Self-Signaling was founded in 1999 by Michael Combe and other scientists. They set out to create the best antibody technology in the world. CST makes products that help researchers find cures to diseases like cancer, Alzheimer's, and Parkinson's. They make, they make the products that help the researchers do their work. They make the highest quality product, and that certainty offers many advantages to the scientific community. Beyond, or CST is now a 550-person company, with offices around the world. In Beverly, the company maintains two facilities, one on Toja Road, and one on Trask Lane, where they do production and R&amp;D, respectively. But beyond its research, the company also maintains a deep commitment to the well-being of its employees, to the environment, and the community. In addition to being a good corporate citizen, CST is growing. CST estimates that it needs to bring on an additional 200 people over the next 10 years. Those 200 people are going to need labs and offices where they can do their work. We believe that Trask Lane does offer the opportunity to meet their expansion needs. We've looked elsewhere around the North Shore, and I would commend the mayor, and Darlene, and the rest of the administration, because they've helped us make the decision that this is, that Trask Lane is the best place for Self-Signaling to expand. For those of you who are familiar with Self-Signaling's Trask Lane facility, it's the site of the former Kings Grant Inn, which was a 125-room motor inn. It is accessed only by Route 128 north. It's an 11-acre site. It's divided approximately half in Danvers and half in Beverly. The build, CST currently has about 110,000 square feet of building there. And as I say, the zoning is CG, primarily CG. CG was established to provide principally for suburban and automotive-related commercial development. Some of the allowed uses include hotel, motel, retail, health clubs, funeral homes, fast food, skating rinks, R&amp;D, bus terminals, and car washes. The field to the east, where you can see the arrow, is the logical direction for CST to expand. Obviously, it's an undeveloped portion of the site, and development in that portion of the site enables the balance of CST's facility to continue operation as uninterrupted as possible. And that is a critical element for CST. The neighborhood, you have the Cornell and Oberlin neighborhoods to the east, and you have the Folly Hill Meadows Apartments to the south, and 128, obviously, to the north. This is an example of, Darlene mentioned that this is CG zoning, and the setbacks are 15 feet. This is a good example of what an 80,000-square-foot expansion and a parking garage would look like, potentially, under CG. Because the site would, would contain less than 65% site coverage, it would not require site plan review. Therefore, there'd be very little public input to, you know, design elements, traffic, all those important aspects of planning that we sometimes take for granted. We think that the better approach here is to alter the zoning from CG to IR. And these are a couple of zoning maps, which I didn't realize it was going to be quite that small, but this is a, this is a look at a section of your zoning map. You can see the, you can see the CST site with a star on it on the left-hand side, on the Danvers border. Above that, in red, is the IR district, which goes into Cherry Hill. Below it, the RSD in green, and to the right, the R10 residential district in pink. This is the actual CST parcel, consists, you can see that about half of it's in Beverly. And in Beverly, you have CG, R10, and RSD zones. Danvers is industrial one. This is a conceptual rendering of what a project might look like under IR. The biggest advantage to IR is that by the ability to go up one story, to exceed the 30-foot, 35-foot height limit of the CG district, enables us to shrink the footprint, pull the building back from the property line, only by, you know, and the cost is a mere 10 feet of height. We have, we have shared this site plan with some of our neighbors. I want to say that I commend the management of CST, because from the beginning, how this project would impact the neighborhood has been central to their deliberations. And we have heard, we've presented our need to expand, and some of the concepts that you'll see tonight, to the neighbors. We've begun to hear some of their concerns, all of which are reasonable, things like noise, air quality, protection of existing easements, and privacy, and lighting, are all elements of, of a, a planning process that we would expect. We would, we believe that the proper time to address those is during the site plan review process, which we are, obviously, going to, if we're successful, we would subject ourselves to. At this point, this is not a design, this is not a site plan, this is not a building design, this is a concept. We have not yet engaged an architect who would take us through the programming and, and design process. This chart, this chart presents the existing, some of the, some of the key dimensional elements of your zoning. First, under CG, then under IR. The second, the third column is the IR setbacks, or dimensional requirements. And the last column is the, is the limitation that CST is willing to self-impose in an effort to provide comfort to the neighbors going forward. So the side, outside of this, the CG and IR dimensional regulations are actually quite similar. But the side setback, which is currently 15 feet, would be 20 feet under IR, but we would commit to a 50-foot setback along the south. That's along the apartment, the Folly Hill apartment side. The rear setback, which is also 15 feet today, would be 25 under IR, but we would commit to a 60-foot setback. The maximum building height would be, is currently 35 feet. The reason we need to, one of the reasons we're seeking relief here is that 35 feet would provide most businesses a three-story building. Labs are a different animal. They need 15 feet floor to floor to meet current design standards. So a three-story building is, by definition, you know, 45 feet. So that's, that, that sort of explains why we can't get three stories in 35 feet, when most, most businesses can. So we don't need the 60 feet that would be offered by IR. We only need those three stories. So we're saying 50 feet, that allows us to have a 45-foot building and a site that falls off as it goes towards 128. But, and we've spoken with the building inspector, and feel comfortable that 15 feet will meet our needs definitionally. Obviously, site plan review, not currently required, would be required under IR. And the buffer yard is, and I'll show you, show you a plan in a minute, but there, both IR and CG call for a buffer yard. We, the first, our, our first effort at trying to meet the needs of the neighbors was to provide, was to create and design a very dense evergreen buffer that would be between, between Self-Signaling's new facility and the neighbors on the Oberlin side of the property. And that, I'll show it to you in a minute, I think it comes up next. So that would be an enhanced buffer. I think that in addition to the considerations of our neighborhood, there's also- there's also a bigger picture. So there's some bigger-picture considerations here, which are the potential economic impact of this. Trask, the two, the two CST facilities currently have a tax base to the city of about $12.8 billion, producing just north of $300,000 annually in tax revenue. This new project, we believe, would, at a minimum, triple that revenue to the city. We think that the assessed value conservatively would be at least $25 million. And using today's tax rates, that would result in more than $900,000 worth of revenue annually. Also, I may have mentioned that they expect to hire an additional 200 people over the next 10 years. Most of those people will live here, will live on the North Shore. They may live in Beverly. Currently, there are 74 employees who work for CST out of the 550 who do live in Beverly. So there is a significant economic ripple. You know, the lunch is out during the day, down to the homes purchased for new employees. So there's a significant, I couldn't begin to quantify that, but it's not insignificant. So I am going to just go back because I wanted to point out the buffer yard. Then I promise I will wrap up. To the, the green section that you see to the right of Building A and extending all the way down to the garage is a, is a 120-tree plan of three types of evergreens, which we've worked with a landscape designer on. Mature trees, 16- to 18-foot trees, placed strategically in ways that we think will help mitigate any visual impact for the neighbors. We have also, through Councilor Rotundo, reached out to the four or five direct abutters to let them know that if we can help by providing fencing or trees on their property, we are more than happy to do so. So with that, I would be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Gaudreau. Members of the City Council with questions. I saw Councilor Rotundo's hand go up.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. Peter, a couple of things. Yes, CST's been great getting out the information to the neighbors. They had an informational meeting with the neighbors. They've been very responsive with the questions. The McKennys, the Driscolls, and the Ponzinis have been really vocal with some concerns. But any questions that have been brought have been forwarded to the Planning Department as well as to CST because they are in the planning or even the conceptual phase. You know, what Peter just said was in regards to maybe a couple of shrubberies in the backyard, perimeter fencing. So it's been a very favorable relationship right now. I did have one question for you, Peter, just because of, while I've had these conversations with the neighbors and selling, or not selling them, but kind of stating, and I don't want to be called a liar or misinformation. We've been talking about the 45 feet, and I know right now you're presenting at 50 feet. So is the building still planned as a 45-foot with the utilities on top, all the cooling units and stuff? Or are you still looking at 50 feet now and then going above that? Just because we had kind of mentioned that at some of our meetings.
Sure. So two, there's two different parts, two different parts of the building there. So the building itself, from, from the grade at the, let me, let me go back and this may be helpful. So the two buildings you see there in gray, the one labeled, if I can read it properly, as G, is a garage, and A is a lab building. The lab building is 45 feet tall at the end closest to the garage. The site is relatively flat as it, as you, as you proceed towards Route 128 to the top of the page, but it begins to drop off as it gets closer to 128. So the building, the roof is still at 45 feet, if you will, but there's some basement wall exposed at the far end. And your calculation for height involves taking the original grade at the four corners of the building. So we need, so we will be at, say, 53, 52, 45, 45. The math works out to be at, say, 48 feet. That's why we need the 50 feet. We think of this as a 45-foot, three-story building, but it's just because of what the grades do at the north end of the site.
And then one other just statement, just so I can have it on the record, is during the conceptual, I know we've had these conversations with the option A and option B. Option A, having the, what I call the valley between the garage and the building, as well as having a solid wall where the planning department's in front of us, or the planning board. I know the neighbors are more favorable to plan, option A that you presented, which is the valley in between as opposed to the solid wall, just for natural light as well as that breeze that may come and come. So those were just some of the concerns as the neighbors had reiterated to me.
And that's incredibly helpful to us to have that feedback because that allows us to, that allows us to move in that direction. And, and so that's why, that's the plan that we've presented tonight. So again, what you see there is a lab building in A, a physically separate garage, G. There is a bridge at the third level, you know, suspect, there is a walkway up in the air that gets you from G to A. But the buildings are separated, which does allow, you know, light and air to pass through. You also asked about the mechanical penthouse that would be on the roof.
Yes.
So your zoning, as is typical, allows for a mechanical penthouse on the roof of a building that exceeds the, in this case, proposed 50-foot height limit. We would also have, we would need a mechanical penthouse. It would probably be 12 feet in height. It would be an enclosed structure. It would contain mechanical equipment, heating, ventilating, air conditioning equipment. It is vented, we would, we would vent it away from the Oberlin neighborhoods and probably, you know, towards the Danvers side. It would also exhaust straight up. We cannot exceed, one of the concerns from mechanical equipment on the roof would be noise. I think that, I can pretty safely, again, we, you know, we don't, we don't have a design or a specification or anything yet. But I think you will find that this equipment will be enclosed. It will be quieter than the existing, than, than equipment that, you know, currently they may be, the neighbors may be able to hear. Also, we, we've, we've come to the realization that noise may be mitigated somewhat by the fact that this building will act as a buffer from the 128 noise, which we think may turn out to be a positive.
Thank you. And those are some of the other things that were mentioned. And I know you didn't have exact answers at the time, but these are things that some of the neighbors, as you're aware, were mentioning, was the noise from the equipment on the roof and things of that nature that you've addressed. So I appreciate that. And again, like I said, I just want to state that, and I don't know if any of the abutters are on the call, but I do want to state that you guys have been extremely responsive to the questions that have been asked by the neighbors. They appreciate it, I appreciate it. I'm sure the mayor as well. So I do want to say it's, it's been a pleasure, at least in this aspect of the project, working with you and being able to give them full explanations to know what's going on. So thank you.
We, we very much appreciate the way you've acted to facilitate between us. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Rotundo. Councilor Feldman.
Thank you. I have two questions. And the first is, I think, pretty simple. The voluntary setbacks that you've proposed, do those, through the development agreement, do those follow the land? Or do they follow, okay, so those...
They would run with the land.
Those, okay, just checking on that. And then, I'm just out of curiosity. I know that you want to expand and hire more and more employees. And you mentioned 74 of the employees being from Beverly. I was just wondering if you had any hiring priorities that you internally have been working on at Cell Signaling? I know, I know a lot of companies have those, either diversity, or equity, or, you know, location, geographic location. I'm just wondering if you have any priorities in place.
So I am absolutely the wrong person to speak to that, but I would be more than happy to get that information for you and follow up. It has not been, my focus has been on, on the real estate side of this. But we can, we, there are, CST is a very progressive company, and I would be willing to bet that there is such a, such a hiring priority.
It was just a curiosity question, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Feldman. Council Flowers, please.
Thank you. I had just two questions, if I may. The first was, I'm curious about the parcel of land that's in Danvers and it's zoned, you said industrial one. Is that, is that an option for expansion if we were not willing to rezone our section? Or, I guess I'm also curious how their zoning for industrial one compares to what's possible with an IR overlay here?
I'm not aware of any reason why expansion on the Danvers side of the property would not be available to us. Does that answer your question?
Well, I guess my question was sort of if, if we were to not incline. I know we saw what would be the by-right development. But I'm thinking about the tax base. Ms. Nguyen mentioned, you know, having a great corporate citizen, but also taxes for, for Beverly. And so just trying to sort of think about, is there a possibility that if we were to sort of not want to rezone, that Danvers would become more desirable to go in that direction?
It, it's certainly, it's certainly possible. I think that we have, you know, from the beginning, gravitated to this portion of the site in large part because we're able to construct the new facilities with as little disruption to the existing operation as possible. And I, I may have, I was trying to go through my presentation quickly, and I may have skipped over it. But CST's needs are 80,000 to 100,000 square feet over the next 10 years. We believe that the, that's an 80,000-square-foot building that you see there. We believe that this will meet their mid-to-long-term needs at this facility.
Thank you. And just to clarify my own understanding, the slide that you showed that was the by-right development that could happen even without the rezoning. So that basically would be if we decide to take no action, that is the way that the site could potentially look in that case?
Exactly right.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Hausmann.
Yes. Good evening, and thank you for your presentation. Yeah, I, just a couple of reflections and one question. My experience as a, as a city councillor over the years has been that Cell Signaling has been an excellent corporate citizen for this, for the city, participating in many community, supporting many community endeavors. And I, I think that the proposal you have and the report from Councilor Rotundo regarding the, and the administration regarding the, you know, the, the community outreach speaks highly of this, of Cell Signaling and this process that you're engaged in, as well as obviously the, you know, the tax benefits to the, to the city. So I'm very favorably disposed of this. So my, my questions really are, have to do with sort of community standards that the city aspires to, one of which is energy sustainability. And the plan Cell Signaling would have around, you know, sort of carbon neutral, carbon, net carbon zero construction. And the other is a sort of a more philosophical question, but given the heat, I don't really want to belabor the point. And it's really a question for our planning director, probably, which is, as we attract and keep, hopefully, businesses like Cell Signaling in our city, where the employee base typically is a higher, higher, higher salaried employee, how that has sort of an effect on affordable housing in the city? So I think that's, if, if Ms. Nguyen's willing to answer that question this evening on the fly, I'd be happy to listen to it. If she'd rather reflect and get back to me, I, you know, again, I'm mindful of the temperature in this room right now. So, but I will, but I, but I do want to ask you about the, the energy sustainability goals for this expansion.
So, thank you. And we have not yet, so first of all, Cell Signaling, sustainability, environmental sustainability is a central ethos at CST. We have not yet gotten to the point in the design process where we have spent much time talking about whether we would do a, let's say, a lead silver, gold, platinum type of building. We haven't gotten there yet. I can tell you that there will be solar panels on the roof of the garage and that there, that Cell Signaling has a very aggressive program, incentive program, incenting their personnel to purchase electric vehicles, sort of putting their money where their mouth is. I think there are more EV chargers in those two parking lots than there are anywhere else on the North Shore. Matt, would you like to, is there anything I should add to? We, we haven't gotten to talking about what level of sustainability this building will be at, is the, is the honest answer.
Yeah, it's really sort of a goal, that, you know, our commitment, you know, sort of internally, obviously, you're getting way ahead in terms of actual design. But conceptually, the commitment of the company to, to, to that design. I pulled up while we were talking a Google aerial view. Doesn't look like presently you have any solar panels, but, you know, I can't really tell from that. So I just don't know where the company is in terms of solid commitments to, to a, to a building that would reflect those values.
I'm just getting, I, I believe that there, there are solar panels at both Trask and Tozier and getting the confirmation nod from...
I can't tell from this, so I, certainly not asserting that that's not the case.
I think when we, when we get to that point in the, in the discussion, because obviously, it's a, it's a, the sustainability is a function of, you have function, program, cost. They all have to
Sure.
get mashed together into a workable model. But if, if what I see day-to-day from Cell Signaling is any indication, there will be a high commitment to sustainability in the construction of this building.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Hausmann. Ms. Nguyen? He gave you an out.
I don't want to spend a lot of time...
He doesn't always do that.
Councilor Hausmann, I think it's a great question. I will just, I would like to think more about it and have further conversation with you about it. I think I would point to, you know, one of the goals of our new master plan is a diverse workforce and a diverse employment base. And I think that is, that is a goal and something we have to strive for and work towards so that we can support a range of incomes and create jobs for people at all spectrums. And some things come to mind, but I think it would be worth putting, you know, having a deeper conversation about that, definitely. But I think it's certainly not lost on us.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good start, Ms. Nguyen. Anybody on the left? Okay, the council has asked their questions. We'll turn this over to Ms. Hutchinson.
Are there members of the planning board who have questions for Mr. Gaudreau or Ms. Nguyen? Derek?
Ah, thank you. I, first of all, I want to make sure that I know what I'm looking at when I look at the chart here. So if you could tell me what B and X are on the plan and whether you have a plot that you can actually pull up that shows anything larger and is superimposed with the zoning change?
Yeah, I think if I understand your question correctly...
Two questions there, actually.
Okay. So this is the entire, let me see if I'm understanding your question correctly. This is the 11.1-acre Cell Signaling parcel at 3 to 9 Trask Lane.
That's right.
What you see in white is in Danvers. What you see in gray-blue is currently CG. Yellow is R10, and orangey is RSD. That, all, all that you see in those three colors would become IR.
Yep. So I think my question is going to be of Ms. Nguyen, actually, first. And that is, as I look at the map, knowing that the people who originally put the zoning map together in our last go-around probably had a method to the madness. I'm curious about the R10 district that's in there right now as zoned for this land, as to whether or not it was meant to be a buffer between CG, RSD, and the other areas. I mean, that can't just miraculously leave, you know, be a sliver that was purposely made R10. I don't think it's big enough for anything to go in there.
I mean, I had the same question, although it is not uniform in size, which is a little perplexing. But there, there is no buffer on that section. So there is, the RSD was created with a buffer of 200 feet along the edge of it. The buffer does not apply on that side of the RSD. I don't really, I don't have a history as to how that was put in place. We don't, I, I would like to think that everything has an intent. I can't say that everything always does have an intent. It could have been a remnant of, of something else left over. The whole other adjacency is RSD. There is nothing in the CG that would be allowed differently being adjacent to an R10 versus an RSD, if that makes sense.
No, could you actually help me out with that? What did you?
So like, in, in some of our zoning districts, like the CC, it says if it's adjacent to a residential zoning district, you can only do X. But if it's adjacent to a commercial use or commercial district, you can do X and Y. In the CG, there's nothing, there isn't anything that is, is dependent on the adjacent zone or use, if that makes sense. It's, it's a pretty straightforward zoning district. They both, it's actually very similar to the IR, where they both have very similar buffer yards built into the zoning themselves.
Well, there is the requirement in our current bylaws, our zoning regulations, it says that if a CG abuts an R district, that there has to be an adequate buffer yard adjoining the district
Yep.
-to screen light, glare, parking lots, all that sort of stuff. So it does go to a buffer yard having to exist, right?
Right. But both R10 and RSD are, are districts, I think. I would interpret them as residential districts, but-
The RSD then would do that. Okay, I had a question about, and these are minor right now, I'm just trying to get my head around this. The little triangular sliver that comes down at the very bottom of the site there? I'm just trying to figure that out. Is that, that abuts, the request is to change it to an IR zone? Is that just so that all the owned property is under the same zoning?
Yes.
Not because there's anything in particular planned for that?
We, we do not.
We do not envision anything happening in that section.
Okay, so that's one set of questions, so thank you for that. The other is in terms of the differences, Ms. Winn, if you could help me out, between our CG or our IR and the Danvers Industrial 1, what the requirements, are there any differences and limitations that would come into play here?
I don't have the I, I don't have the Danvers I-1 for me. I know Peter had it. They were, they're very, when I looked at them, it's very similar to our IR district. There may be some small changes, you know, minor things, but the nature of the zoning districts are very similar. Peter Scott. Hand you a little chart.
Need a, need a little chart. So are there any specific, what I have is some of the dimensional regulations of the districts compared. Are there any, would you like setbacks, height?
Height first?
The building height in the, in the I district in Danvers is 60 feet.
It's 60 feet, okay.
Let me, hang on, let me just check that because it made me higher. I take that back. It's 55 feet, four-story, 55 feet.
Okay, so it's in and around the same. And then, but you're really looking to expand on the Beverly side here or to build on the Beverly side, not on the Danvers side? So if we can go back to the, the conceptualized drawing? So what B and X on this?
Your eyes may work better than mine. Oh, here we go. B, so B is just a connector from the existing facility to the new building and X is the existing building.
X is the existing building down there. So this is really-
So what you see in the darker gray are the, are proposed and B is also proposed. That connector is also proposed.
B is also another, okay. And can you, I was out there today, actually. What a beautiful day to be out under the tent having lunch. I wasn't, I was watching other people do that. But I saw the buffer of trees that runs along the eastern border here-
Mm-hmm.
-and it seems very thick. It's deciduous trees, so there wouldn't be very much coverage, I don't think, during the fall and winter and early spring. But is that represented in here or are, would a conceptualized plan in order to do something on this site eat into that buffer as it is just right now?
So the proposed buildings do not eat into the buffer. We don't want to, we want to preserve as much of that deciduous buffer as possible and most of it's along the property line. So I think there's very little of it that would be impacted by the, by the building construction. But I think this plan may be helpful. But we, because we're trying to create a visual buffer, we feel the need to supplement it with, with evergreen trees and to, to plant, to create the proper conditions for the planting of the evergreens, there will be some cutting of understory and other things, but not the, not the large deciduous trees. Let me, let me go to a plan that I just sort of kept in reserve in case it was helpful. So here you see a formal planting plan of literally 120 trees, all, you can see how they relate to the proposed buildings. And those are how we're using the enhanced buffer zone. They'd all be native species. To the east along Oberlin, they'd be 16 to 18-foot trees. Along the south where that, that the benefit of height is not as great, they'd probably be closer to eight to 10-foot trees. And we have confirmed that both fencing and off-site trees are something that we're more than happy to do. We think that a tree, a tree or two strategically located in a neighbor's backyard where they might like it will be worth 10 trees on our side of the parcel because of the way some of the grades work.
Mm-hmm. And would you say the, I guess the south side, the eight to 10-foot trees, that basically follows the existing fences there, I think?
Yes.
How many parking places do you have on the site existing right now?
Oh, you're going to test my memory. I don't have that at my fingertips, I apologize.
Okay. How many do you anticipate the, being added if there are 200 new jobs? 200 spots?
That garage will be somewhere between 280 and 360 spaces, we anticipate.
Have you done any traffic impact or any sort of analysis on this?
We, we have not done that yet. That's obviously something that will be coming. Should we be fortunate enough to proceed further.
Knowing your existing employees and their, their parking and driving habits, I've, I've heard people make mention of the 1A interchange. I take it that's mostly for turnaround for employees who are leaving and have to go northbound on 128, so they turn around on that next exit?
Mm-hmm.
And that sort of thing? And do you have any estimate as to employee, you know, visits, use, time of day, et cetera, exists now on that interchange?
We don't, I don't have traffic data for the interchange. I don't know whether Darlene or, I know that the mayor at one point was speaking about that, but-
No, I don't think, I don't because that's, the traffic, the traffic data will be the same regardless of which project they built allegedly. They're, they have told me and I feel comforted that with the kind of new journeys to work, information and also kind of the, the priority that they put on sustainability, that there are some flexibility options within cell signaling's employment workforce and also, you know, staggered arrivals and times, so that not everybody's arriving at nine o'clock and leaving at five o'clock. And also, you know, they have been interested partners in alternative modes of transportation. I believe that cell signaling has a higher percentage of people who ride their bikes to work than maybe many other businesses that operate in Beverly and have also participated in our program in the past. So I think the, exploring ways, continuing to explore ways to reduce the impacts of the Trask Lane intersection on the adjacent intersections is a major city priority that, you know, will-
But we don't have numbers right now.
It's not, no, that would come during the site plan review.
Yep. During the site plan review, which would happen after this was approved.
Correct. But if they, if this is not approved, they don't actually have to go to site plan review.
They couldn't build a three, a three-story building here at a 35-foot limit, though, right?
Correct. I mean, what, so what the, what that, the plan of what we don't want to do showed was a 30-foot tall building that had 80,000 square feet and it was just a two-story lab building instead of a three-story lab building. But because the footprint's bigger, you end up pushing closer to the neighbors and that sort of thing. So yes, the, the, cell signaling's needs could be met on-site, but when we showed the management team, you know, how that would impact the neighbors, it was a non-starter. What else can we do? Well, we can go up. But to go up, we need to come here.
Yeah, I'm just, you know, the reason I have a lot of questions here, I think, is in part because it's only very recently, well after the, the joint hearing was scheduled, that actually I think I became aware, mostly within the last few days, of what this is about. Because originally, as I read the letter, it was about having the zoning in the area be similar to the Cherry Hill Industrial Park. That's what's in the cover letter for this. This seems like it's a different occasion. Not that it's not important or meritorious at all, it's just a different set of circumstances and facts to investigate and look at it if this is a zoning request on behalf of a specific entity rather than an overall policy of the city for making our zoning correlate with each other in different segments of the city. It, it's a completely different question to me.
Yeah, I think it serves local goals. We might not have gone around and, and, you know, we could have gone through an exercise of picking out all the, the kind of zoning areas that don't conform to, you know, that stand out as this kind of single parcel or a couple of parcels. That's not the exercise we went through. We had an opportunity and a discussion with somebody who was looking to do something with their land and noticing that this change would make it more consistent with the zoning across the street. It's a similar type of use, a similar type of use that we would see staying there and that it, it didn't, it wasn't random. It made sense. If, if there was no IR anywhere around, I don't, I don't know if we would have supported the change. But I think because it is making it consistent, that was one of the reasons why we thought it made sense and it was justifiable.
And I'm not discounting it. I'm just saying that, you know, this is a bigger, bigger issue than I thought it was originally in terms of, you know, looking, looking at all of the ins and outs of it from this particular viewpoint.
Yeah. I mean, sometimes, sometimes these things do come up that are, many times, we get asked to do things that are not necessarily, have not been specified or laid out in a policy to that nature way ahead of time or in a plan. We have to evaluate each of those things on a case-by-case basis and weigh the benefits to the, the city and the community on the whole and, and come to a decision as to whether we think it makes sense and whether it's something that we can stand behind. There certainly are, are things that we've, we've said, no, we don't think that we can support that for various reasons. But this was something that seemed to be beneficial to all parties that were going to be impacted.
Yeah, and I'm not disagreeing with that.
Yeah, that's just kind of the background.
But I also haven't had time to read the nine-page document that came before, which maybe will spell this stuff out in more detail. I'm not quite sure, so, the one that came before the meeting.
Yeah, I mean, I think the development agreement is, I know Stephanie Williams was on and perhaps wants to talk, would speak on it, but that was something that, as, as we mentioned, you know, it, it wasn't good enough for us, for the developer to say, I'll do these things. We knew that if they were making these commitments, we needed them to be in writing and to carry with the land. And so that was something that we asked them to put together. It, as I kind of tried to point out, the, just changing the zoning to IR would be beneficial, but this is kind of another layer that provides more certainty to the neighbors. I don't, it's very much a legal document. I, I understand that you probably want to read it, but the parameters that were listed, the dimensional parameters that were listed on the presentation are those that are included in there, so.
Okay. Yeah, I apologize, I've taken far too much time here. And I'm interested to hear from the neighbors after the other committee members have a chance.
Actually, Darlene, can, while we're on the topic, just that triangular piece, Beverly's GIS shows that the subject parcel owned by CST is, is, does not include that RSD triangle. Is the, is the GIS wrong or-
Correct.
The GIS is wrong?
Yes, they're going through the process to have that fixed. They, CST acquired that parcel when they bought the property and for some reason it didn't show up. So they have the deeds and the title to show that. It just, our GIS is updated every six months.
Is there a potential impact on the remaining RSD land that would be to the right of it by pulling that piece out of RSD and turning it into the IR?
I don't believe so. The, yeah, no, that's additional IRSD, which is already non-conforming to the RSD. So there's not much additional development potential at that site. But there is not some, I'm not aware of any thing that would negatively impact that.
We did include the owners of the Folley Hill Apartments in, in our neighbor meeting and I believe that they were very supportive of what we were proposing, so I don't think that at least they saw some negative to them.
Okay, other, other questions for members of the board? Wayne?
Emily? Yeah, a couple of questions and a comment. First, I got a little lost in the building height. It goes from 45 to 53 feet because of the slope. And then there's a mechanical penthouse on top of that? Is that correct? So what is the total vertical prominence of the building?
So from the south, if you were standing on the south end of the building, it would be, you, the building would be 45 feet tall, tall to the roof, then there would be some flat roof, and then there would be a mechanical penthouse which would be set back from all four sides of the roof, which would be 12 feet tall. So in total, the building as measured from the south end would be 45 plus 12, or 57. If you were to go to the 128, the north end, where that's, where the site has come across, you know, at zero, and then let's say it drops down to minus seven, your building then, you know, your first floor needed to be leveled, right? So now you have 45 feet of lab space plus seven feet of basement showing. So your 45 plus seven is 52, plus your 12 feet of mechanical penthouse, 52 plus 12 is 64. The mechanical penthouse is excluded from the definition of height in the bylaw.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for doing that math. I wouldn't dare to do that in public. And the height of the garage?
The height of the garage would also live within the, would also live within the same, you know, 50-foot height limit. We think it probably would not exceed 35. But we're still, you know, we're still playing with the capacity of the garage.
Okay, thank you. I want to express my appreciation for Councilor Hausmann's very pertinent questions about the aspirational, aspirations of CST regarding the carbon zero construction. And you replied, Mr. Gerdow, that CST is a very progressive company, sustainability is a central ethos, and at CST, there's a high commitment to sustainability. I appreciate all of that and will be looking forward to hearing about how that is fleshed out in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions for members of the planning board? Okay, I've actually got some. To some extent, it feels like that this request is being driven by the idea of CST's expansion, both in terms of building and in terms of employment. And given that, I, I think CST entered into a TIF in 2006 that expires in 2026. And I guess one of the things I'd like to know is what were CST's obligations under that TIF and have they been met? Because it seems to me, as I said, that much of this zoning change seems to me to be premised on this idea of expansion. More jobs, more jobs, we need more lab space, more building space. And just looking to see, we're making a significant change here. We're moving from a CG, leaving that neighborhood with, with no CG and moving it to an IR. And so I'm, I'm just wondering, again, with that TIF, what were the, what was, what was CST's obligations under the TIF and were they met? Because I presume they include jobs.
Is that a question for me or for Darlene or-
I don't think it would be Darlene, but if she has it-
No, I mean, I have that data. I'm just trying to pull it up right now.
Okay.
We have, Matt Carden is cell signaling CFO, so my guess is he's intimately familiar.
Yeah, I mean, I have the numbers here, but I'll let you keep going.
Sure. So the, the TIF agreement that we signed in, or that we negotiated in 2006, off the top of my head, we were required to bring our job level at Trask Lane up to 271 full-time employees. I hope that's the right number. This is-
I know, it's hard to see. So 100 and, it says 90 jobs to create 171 jobs retained.
Okay. So I-
You've exceeded that.
So we've exceeded that substantially. I can't wait to see the number now, but I, I, I think we've exceeded that by, we exceeded it several years ago. I want to say it was six or seven years ago that we, that we hit that, that minimum, perhaps a little bit more than that. And we've been well above that minimum for many years. So I, I think that we're safely 50 to 60 employees above that minimum and that's at, that's at Trask Lane.
Yeah, I have in my chart, so 90 jobs created was the requirement, 105 jobs were created at the time this was written down, and 171 jobs were retained. That, you know, they've continued to, they, their number of job creations might be higher-
Yep.
-but that's what we have in our records.
And since then too, we've, we've expanded our Tozer Road facility at, in Beverly and we've moved a number of positions from Trask Lane to Tozer Road and then refilled the Trask Lane positions.
Thank you. Thank you. Darlene, if I could- Darlene, if I could, this would not, this, this does not create an IR overlay district. It actually changes the zoning from CG to IR.
Yes, that was.
Do we have any concerns that that general area will therefore have no access to CG development, which is a commercial retail sort of type of, of development?
I think a lot of the, I mean, for one, there's a consistency factor with being consistent with Danvers and what can be, with a split parcel, what can be developed. The other is that a lot of the kind of commercial office uses are the same or similar. Some of the ones, I think, you know, Peter, Peter noted, you know, retail. I'm not sure, you know, what, that we would want a large-scale retail on the size, given the size of that parcel. I'm not sure that's the use that we would want in that location. So we didn't, when we looked at it, there weren't any CG uses that we thought were desirable in that location that would be precluded by making the change.
Okay. And the flip side of that coin is by changing that zoning to IR, the potential uses expand significantly, particularly with respect to things like marijuana. And there's no guarantees in life, and there's no guarantees that CST will be there for the long haul. We certainly absolutely hope they will be, particularly with those types of jobs. But is that, is, are those types of uses acceptable in that area should that, should that arise in the future? And I know it's speculative, but so much of zoning is speculative. You have to look forward, you have to look at potentiality.
Yeah. I mean, if you're, if you're talking specifically about a marijuana retailer or marijuana cultivation, they do all require a special permit, and they also require a more strict state process. So those specifically, I think, would have to go through, there'd be, certainly, they, they could be allowed by special permit. There would be a higher burden to get them some of the other uses that would be allowed. The, by right allowable uses are actually fewer than in the CG. By number.
But even those that are allowed by special permit are significantly different than what is allowed under CG?
I think there are, I mean, in my, there are some marijuana uses allowed in the CG.
Yeah, more of a retail basis, I think.
Yes. Just marijuana use, retail use of marijuana retailers. So the, the difference is that the manufacturers, I mean, that's the key difference between IR and CG generally. So manufacturing would be allowed in the IR and cultivation. Those are so high, such, you know, they're not that in and of their own self. They're very comparable to a, a standard manufacturing use. And again, they're highly regulated. So I'm, I'm not sure that that would be a bad outcome necessarily. I mean, they're, they would have to go through a very strict process to get approved and be approved by the, both the state and the city. And Frank, you know, some of those buildings, many of those buildings are much cleaner than your standard interpretation of manufacturing and have far greater security. So I don't, I don't necessarily think that would be a bad thing.
Yeah, I'm just not sure.
Hoping it's not the case.
Exactly. But I'm not sure how the, how the neighbors might feel about that. Um, and I know you can't speculate to that. One last question, at least from me, and that is, do we create, do we create a bad precedent because this feels like that we're changing our zoning to meet the specific needs of a specific taxpayer? And I, that's a huge concern for me. Let me, let me say, let me say this before. I totally understand it. I'm all for expanding our commercial and industrial tax base. Jobs are, jobs are, it's all about jobs. So I'm not saying that I'm opposed to this, but I have a significant concern on, on those grounds.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's something that we considered. And as I mentioned before, that's not something that we would take lightly in terms of, you know, whether evaluating, whether we would recommend a zoning proposal. I mean, there are numerous opportunities for anyone to submit a zoning change request, whether it be from the administration or from a citizen petition. We felt like the benefits in this situation outweighed, you know, that potential cost. And as I think I tell you a lot, I don't, I don't like to say that things create precedent because every, every situation is unique. And I know that if somebody could point and say, well, you did it for this case, but every situation is very unique. And I don't, I don't like to imply that, that permits that we give or zoning changes that we support necessarily create a precedent.
Okay, thank you.
If I may add, I don't think we would have asked for or suggested this zoning change were this parcel not adjacent to the IR district. And we thought that contiguity meant, you know, was significant in the, in the extension. It wasn't creation of a new, you know, a new island of zoning. It was an extension.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hutchinson. Is there anybody here in the audience that wants to make a comment during this public hearing on this issue? Come on, Brendan, you work for Ellen.
Yeah, I'm, thank you. Just one question that popped up that I wanted to make sure we were able to clarify. So, and Darlene, I believe this question is better directed to you. If the zoning, as it is, stays CG and CST goes forward with some of the alternative development plans that they had proposed, given that there would be the absence of a site plan review requirement, what would future input from this board look like throughout that process versus where, if we go through with the zoning change to IR and the site plan review requirement is implemented, what would those two?
If the zoning, if the zoning change is not approved, it will be, it would be a building permit application. There would be no public review, no planning board review, no requirement for traffic impact analysis, or there would be stormwater management permits, certainly, related to the engineering department. But yeah, there, the planning board would not review the project. And that's based, because of the, the way our zoning is written and based on lot coverage, they, they would not trigger site plan review for this size expansion.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying.
Thank you, Mr. Sweeney. We're done. You what?
I have a question when the planning board is done.
Okay, they were done, but Brendan jumped in quick.
He's a rookie.
I know he is. He's a good guy, though.
I know he is.
I'm out to the public right now. So is there anybody else here in the, in council chambers? I don't think so, that would like to make a comment or ask a question? How about anybody home on Google Meet? You could type in your name and address for the record and ask a question.
Stephanie Williams.
Oh, Stephanie Williams is what?
Your hand up.
Oh, she does? Okay. I'm sorry, Ms. Williams. I'm fighting a war on two fronts here. Ms. Williams?
Thank you.
How are you on the big screen?
I just, I wanted to respond to a concern that sounds like the planning board chair may have concerning making a zoning change for the benefit of one property owner. And, and I can appreciate that. I will just say that under case law, this, it is perfectly acceptable to make a zoning change, even if it benefits only one property owner, as long as the city can identify some rational or reasonable planning basis for making the zoning change. So I, I feel comfortable that this would withstand any kind of challenge that it's any kind of spot zoning. I'm not sure if that's exactly what your concern was, but I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Um, sorry. Thank you, Russ. Council Hausmann, did you want to add something?
Yeah, I just have a request for the gentleman or Darlene. Because we do not have an as-built or, well, basically, the graphics are very difficult to follow, and we don't have any hard copies that sort of help us. So I've, I've, I have a aerial view of, of the site. And I wonder if you could just point out to me that on this screen, conceptually, where you're talking about, just to make sure I understand the location.
So is, is this picture on the screen similar to what you're looking at?
Uh, yes.
Okay, all right. So Darlene's got a great idea. We'll use the cursor. So the, oh, no. So the area of expansion, this, where you see the cursor moving now, would be approximately the location of building A. And then I'm going to come down here below the, the arrow into this section of the property. This is where you would see building G, the garage. Is that helpful?
Uh, yeah, that's, that's very helpful. So the, the buffer, so there's this, if you can move the cursor back up towards 128, there's this small freestanding building. What does that represent?
That is a tent.
A temporary structure.
Temporary structure.
Okay. So that, if you draw sort of a vertical line through that tent up and down, there's a line of trees there that provide buffers presently between cell signaling and the neighbors. All of that is going to be removed as part of the proposed development, correct?
I believe that most, if not all of this, will be removed. As we get closer to 128, they'll be preserved.
Okay. And then the, the 50-foot buffer that would receive the, the new vegetation, the new trees would be added to the existing trees that are in the backyards of the closest residential structures?
That, that is correct. All of the proposed trees are planted on cell signaling property naturally. We, you know, didn't want to assume anything about planting elsewhere. But we obviously have made it, you know, we will make trees available to neighbors because I think they'll be particularly effective on there, just because of the way the graves work. Some of those houses are set above the backyard of CST, or their, their backyard is above the CST site.
So if I may, the, the horizontal line of, of trees up there, that represents the, the neighborhood of Cornell and Oberlin Street?
This, so that what you see in color are all new evergreens. The property line is that straight, it's a stone wall. It's that straight line just to the east of all of the trees, and then the Cornell and Oberlin neighborhood is just above that, that property line.
Yeah, so I'm just trying to orient myself. So Oberlin and Cornell are, are at the, at the top of the.
Yes, this, this is, this is Oberlin and Cornell here.
Right. And the trees that go in a sort of a slanting vertical direction down, those are a, a proposed new buffer for the buildings at Apple Village? Is that right?
That's correct.
Folly Hill.
Folly Hills. They're, those buildings are, those buildings are set back much further from the site than the homes on Oberlin and Cornell.
Yeah, I guess I'm looking at a parking lot here. Okay. All right, thank you. Yeah, I was just trying to orient myself in, in the absence of sort of a, a, sort of better graphics, it's a little hard to pick it up on that. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Gordo, in addition to.
Oh, I'm sorry. I had one more question about that. The trees that are shown on this graphic?
Yep.
16 to 18 feet, 8 to 9, is that a height represent the conceptual height of the trees that will be planted when they are mature? Or the height of the trees that will be planted at the time the construction is done?
Great, great, great question. That's at the time of planting, and these trees will all mature at 45 to 70 feet, 75 feet tall.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Gordo, these particular trees displayed are new trees?
What you see there in green are new trees.
On the previous slide, the, if you'd go back, please.
Uh, that one?
No, go back to the.
A little further.
One more.
I'm lost.
In the, uh, the one, in that, in that range, the, where the new plot of land.
Yeah.
The existing trees to the neighborhood, that group, will they stay?
The, the trees along this border.
Yep.
Will stay. There will be some trimming of understory in, in order to enhance the, you know, the, the growing of the new trees, but the mature deciduous trees will remain. There are, there are, I want to say, two or three that have been deemed dead or dying, and those would come out. But the goal was to maintain the, the mature deciduous cover.
Thank you.
Please, Mr. Williams.
Thank you. Again, about these trees, are these trees to the east and to the south, is that meant to be kind of a mitigation for the loss of green space that will occur when this field is destroyed?
No, it's really intended as a visual and sound buffer to separate the new, the new development, which will be closer to the existing homes than what they have currently. So it's in an effort to, you know, hide, hide what's going to be built.
Thank you.
Okay, Council Hausmann?
Yeah. Sorry to dwell on this point for a moment, but we did only get the, the signed, I'm not sure exactly what it's called, development agreement here just a couple hours before the meeting. So it's sort of a quick, quick attempt to run through it. The restrictions that are noted here have to do with setbacks in this agreement. They do not address sort of the, you know, sustainability, carbon footprint of the trees, which at least is sort of a specific part of your proposal. And I, I wonder, this may be a question for Darlene, and maybe a question for Ms. Williams. In what way is the plan enforceable vis-à-vis the, the site plan for the trees? I'm a little rusty on my planning board process. Would it go through site plan and would there be an enforceable restriction that those trees be planted as part of the permitting process?
That would be something the planning board could make as a condition of the site plan review. So while site plan review is not discretionary, the board can apply any reasonable conditions on their decision. So, for example, if, if a plan was presented, in this case, I would recommend that the planning board do specify the amount and location of trees as one of the conditions on the decision so that it is enforceable and understood, a reasonable condition based on, as Mr. Williams said, the, the development of a parcel and removal of other trees on the site, but hopefully planting of trees in a greater amount than removed.
Okay, thank you. I know the planning board, at least some of the members are, are all over this in terms of sustainability and, you know, sort of carbon footprint. So the, but, so the, for me at least, the trees, while they don't really speak to the economics and, and so forth of retaining cell signal, in, in terms of the, the values that the city's articulated around climate change and so forth, are, are an important part of the, of the proposal for me. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Hausmann.
I just want, just one more point, basically, because you were referencing the development agreement. I think the reason perhaps it's not included is because the buffer yard is required under both conditions. So the minimum buffer yard is still required under the CG or the IR. They're talking about the enhanced trees. I think it would benefit the planning board to make that a condition.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody, Council Flaherty?
Yes, I've been listening to both sides. The, the thought process around this has, has been good. I think, we don't do this every day, kind of to Darlene's point. The opportunity, I think, before us, not only tax dollars, sustainability, but jobs is before us to help in exactly right off 128, which I think is where it should be. It's a great opportunity for the city, and like I said, we don't do this every day. I think you made a valid point. But we don't do this all the time. And I'm not putting words in their mouth, but the idea of, they've been looking for a place to go, and I want to keep the jobs in Beverly. I want to grow those jobs in Beverly. So we're able to have a nice, strong tax base so they can afford the schools, police, fire. And this is an opportunity where, this is where the process should be where we're at. And to me, again, a lot of good questions, but for us not to move forward on this, I think would be a mistake. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Flaherty. Anyone else? Okay, hearing no further questions or comments, I'll close the city council portion of this public hearing and refer that back to the planning board.
Members of the planning board, I think that there is some desire on, on some members' parts to be able to have some time to review that developers' agreement. So if you all are in agreement, I would suggest that we move to. So if you all are in agreement, I would suggest that we move to continue our public hearing until our next meeting so that it gives us enough time to read over the developers' agreement and to be able to formulate any questions.
So moved.
A motion by Mr. Beckwith. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Andrea Toulouse. I will read the roll. Alexandra Kraft?
Yes.
Sarah Bartley?
Yes.
Derek Beckwith?
Yes.
Ellen Flannery?
Yes.
Wayne Miller?
Yes.
Brendan Sweeney?
Yes.
Andrea Toulouse?
Yes.
Ellen Hutchinson?
Yes.
Thank you. And now I'd welcome a motion to take a 10-minute recess so that we can reconvene in our -- in the conference room.
So moved.
I have a motion by Ms. Flannery. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Beckwith. I'll call the roll. Alexandra Kraft?
Yes.
Sarah Bartley?
Yes.
Derek Beckwith?
Yes.
Ellen Flannery?
Yes.
Wayne Miller?
Yes.
Brendan Sweeney?
Yes.
Andrea Toulouse?
Yes.
Ellen Hutchinson?
Yes.
Motion passes. We'll reconvene in 10 minutes.
Thank you. Always good to see you.
Always good to see you, too. Do I have everything?
Yeah.
Thank you. Nice to see you. You, too. That was the first time I knew.
Wonderful evening.
Yes. That was great.
Wonderful evening.
Yes.
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 Those of you that are new, when I bang the cabbie, you get back to your seat.
I was running, sir.
Yeah.
It's as fast as you can see me run.
The king has spoken. Confirming member access.
Wish I had been more on the ball.
Where is everyone?
Everybody go.
No, we're good, right? As long as we're here.
Yeah. It's almost fine.
I would entertain a motion to accept the minutes of our three previous meetings. The first was held on Monday, May 17. It was a regular city council meeting. The second was on Thursday, May 20. It was a meeting of the Committee on Legal Affairs. And the last set of minutes I would like to approve tonight are Wednesday, May 26, and that is the special city council meeting where Mayor Cahill presented his budget. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And then opposed? Thanks, guys. That's good work. Three sets of minutes approved. Communications from His Honor, the mayor.
Order number 18. Dear Honorable City Council, I hereby appoint subject to your review and recommendation Ms. Keta Fisher, 2103 Broton Drive, Beverly, to serve on the Human Rights Committee. Her term is to be effective until April 4, 2023. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
Please refer to the Committee on Public Services.
Order number 119. Dear Honorable City Council, I hereby appoint subject to your review and recommendation Mr. David Gendow of 21 Ocean Street, Beverly, to serve on the Salem, Beverly Water Board. His term is to be effective until January 3, 2024. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
And please refer that to the Committee on Public Services. I would entertain a motion to accept the late file from Mayor Cahill on order number 125. So moved.
Second.
And a roll call? Oh, no, not a roll call.
Thank goodness.
I promise I'll be doing it next time. All right, so we accepted the late file. Now you read it.
Yes.
Okay.
Dear Honorable City Council, I hereby appoint subject to your review and recommendation Mr. Blair Smith, LIC SW 15 Ives Street, number 34, Beverly, to serve on the Beverly Council on Aging. His term will be effective until June 30, 2024. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
Please refer that to the Committee on Public Services. Good thing I'm not trying to ride a bike again, right? Communications from other city offices and boards.
Order number 120. Communication from Council Copeland for the trash cans and trash collections around the city, primarily in city parks.
We're going to refer that to the Committee on Public Services?
That was order number 21.
You did.
Order number 21. Sorry. Do you want me to read again?
No. You want to do 120 first? 120 will go--
120 is the marijuana one.
Right. 121 is good in public services.
Okay.
Want to do 120 now?
I just didn't want to. Yeah, okay.
No, you do 121.
Okay. Order number 120, the communication from Councilor Copeland for the marijuana dispensary license.
And please refer that to the Committee on Legal Affairs. And we already took care of order number 122, the laptops. So we'll go to communications, applications, and petitions.
Order number 123. Communications from the city clerk. Renewal of 2021 petroleum storage registration for 2021 Bass River Tennis Club at 31 Toza Road.
So we'll refer that to the Committee on Legal Affairs. And now motions and orders.
Do you want me to read the whole thing, right?
I do. You want me to read a fight?
Sure, I have it.
All right.
Thank you.
Now I really feel like I'm at home. Just say that. It's time for me to go, guys. "In the year 2021, be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Beverly as follows: Chapter 215, 215-12, placing or depositing snow or ice into streets or sidewalks as amended as follows. One, inserting the phrase 'snow and ice removal' into the name of the section as follows: Snow and ice removal in placing or depositing snow or ice into streets or sidewalks. Two, designating the existing provision of Section 215-12 as Section A and inserting the following language at the end of the section, or in such a way as to obstruct the access to or the operation of any fire hydrant." So that the revised section reads as follows. "No person shall deposit -- shall place or deposit any ice or snow on any street or sidewalk, or in such a way as to obstruct the access to or the operation of any fire hydrant." Three, inserting a new section, 215-12B, as follows. "Snow and ice removal. The owner of any building, structure, or lot of land abutting upon any sidewalk, including any curb, ramp, or cut, unless otherwise granted an exemption, shall, after the ceasing of snowfall, if in the daytime within six hours and if in the nighttime before 1:00 PM the following day, cause the snow to be removed therefrom. The preceding provision shall apply to snow which falls from buildings as well as that which falls from the clouds." Two, "The owner of any building, structure, or lot of land abutting any sidewalk, including any ramp, no curb, ramp, or cut, any portion of which is encumbered by ice, within six hours after the sidewalk becomes encumbered with ice, shall, unless otherwise granted an exemption, cause such sidewalk to be made safe and convenient by removing the ice therefrom, or by keeping the same covered with sand or some other suitable substance." Three, "Is violation of this ordinance shall be subject to a fine of $25. If the violation continues, each subsequent 24-hour period shall constitute a separate offense and be subject to a fine in the amount of $25." Four, "The Department of Municipal Inspection shall be the enforcement agent and the -- with the assistant of the Beverly Police Department." Five, "The Commissioner of Public Works shall have the authority to extend the timeframe set forth in subsections 1 and 2 in the event that severe weather conditions warrant such. Any such extension shall not exceed six hours without the approval of the mayor." C, exemptions. "Individuals may be granted an exemption from the requirements of this section upon the submission of a form to the city attesting that, one, they are unable to perform snow and ice removal as required herein because they, A, are over the age of 65, or B, physical health reasons prevent them from doing so, and, two, due to the financial hardship, they are unable to hire somebody to do so. Any such exemption must be renewed annually."
And this is the final passage?
This is final passage.
Final passage was -- first reading was May 3, and today it's the final passage, and it was in the newspaper as well.
Council Hausman?
Yes, Mr. President. I just want to say that I've had an opportunity to speak with Councilor Rotundo about this and not with Councilor Feldman because we would be open meeting law violation as she's on the same subcommittee as me. I'm going to, as I have in the prior two votes, readings of this, you know, vote in favor of this. And I want to compliment and acknowledge the work of my colleagues on bringing this forward. I'm going to vote for it because I don't want the perfect to be the enemy of the good. As a lawyer, I have some issues with the drafting of this, but those can be addressed over time as needed, if needed. So I just want to compliment them on their hard work. And the question of council having resources to help them draft, you know, draft language in ordinance is a separate question. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Council Hausman. Anybody else? Council Feldman or Council Rotundo? I'm sure you've commented on this and thought about it enough. So I would entertain a motion to approve the ordinance. So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight to zero. Thank you. And that is all we have for this evening. Correct, Ms. Kent?
Mr. President?
Yes?
May I just make mention of the--
I know, I'm not to that part yet.
I think you were just -- my apologies. I'm new to this. It's the second--
That's all we have on our agenda this evening. Is there anything anybody else would like to-- I'm going to go to Council Rotundo.
Well, thank you, Mr. President.